Get started. I want to welcome everybody this evening, so if we could please stand. Mr. Pack is not here with us tonight, and I would like, unfortunately, his father passed away, and I would like to give the family a little bit of silence and give them a prayer for that, please. And then after that, Vice President Lesher will be giving the prayer, and then we're going to do the presentation of the flag. So let's do a moment of silence for Mr. Pack's father, please. Mr. Lesher?
Oh Lord, how manifold are your works. In wisdom you have made them all, the earth is full of your creatures. Yonder is the sea, great and wide, creeping things innumerable are there, living things both small and great. There go the ships, and Leviathan that you formed for the sport of it. Grant us and our citizens' safety, as we enjoy the more than 600 miles of shoreline in Talbot County. Keep us safe when aboard boats, whether for work or pleasure, from tempests and other perils of the waters. Moreover, we ask for peace in our land, as we see other communities torn by violence and unrest. Give us wisdom to govern with justice, that we might find that peace, in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher, I appreciate that. Okay. Okay, we got an agenda before us tonight on May 17th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, council? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, we'll go down to the minutes now, council, of April 26th before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next on the agenda is dispersments of May 17th. We've had time to review all that. Does the council see any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? And if not, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent, okay? So up tonight, we got National Safety Boater Week, and if you guys want to come on up here, that'd be great. Madam Secretary, when they get up here, would you please read the proclamation into the record, please?
National Safe Boating Week, May 21st through 27th, 2022. Whereas many residents and visitors annually enjoy recreational boating, including fishing, water skiing, waterfowl hunting, sailing, canoeing, and kayaking in the waters within and surrounding Talbot County. And whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, 75% of which are caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of boating-related accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment, and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would still be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, safe boaters have applied knowledge gained by attending the United States Coast Guard-approved safe boating classes, and safe boaters operate vessels that have passed a Coast Guard Auxiliary or U.S. Power Squadron Vessel Safety Check. And whereas, Talbot County recognizes the year-round volunteer efforts, voluntary efforts of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotillas throughout Maryland in promoting safe boating education and practices through classroom instruction, vessel examinations, and water patrols. And whereas, on June 4th, 1958, President Dwight D. Eisenhower established National Safe Boating Week, and in 1995, the date for National Safe Boating Week was changed to the full week before Memorial Day weekend each year. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2022, as Safe Boating Week in Talbot County, and urge all those who boat to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County the 17th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, good job. Is there a motion, a second, to approve this proclamation?
Show move, second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion, a second. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Okay. Welcome, guys, really appreciate it. Mr. Reed?
Yes, Mr. Carey.
Yes, yes, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you for helping us to support safe boating here in Talbot County. My name's Reed Carey, I'm the Public Affairs Officer for the Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla here in Easton. I am very honored to be joined tonight by post-standby second class Tyler Lasky, Edward Burke, who's a fellow auxiliary, and the commander of the Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla in Easton, and Officer Nathan Bradley, who is an officer with the Department of Natural Resources Police.
That's great.
We're thrilled that you're supporting us and joining us in supporting safe boating. Recreational boating is an activity enjoyed by over 100 million Americans, and obviously, Talbot County has fantastic, beautiful opportunities for boating. However, it's an activity that does have risks. In the year 2020, there were over 5,000 boating accidents, and more fatalities than usual. There were 767 fatalities in 2020. Here in Maryland alone, there were 148 boating accidents and six deaths. It's clear that during the COVID-19 pandemic, as recreational boating has increased, the risks have increased. Between 2019 and 2020, the rate of boating accidents increased from 5.2 per 100,000 registered boats to 6.5 per 100,000 registered boats, which is a 25% year-over-year increase. Safe boating requires preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most boating accidents, and that simply wearing a life jacket could present 86% of boating fatalities. Simple procedures such as carrying emergency equipment, emergency distress and communications equipment, wearing your life jacket, attending a safe boating course, participating in free safety boat, free boating safety checks, and staying safe, staying sober while boating substantially decrease risks to boaters. Safe Boating Week has been recognized nationally since 1958, and traditionally is now is the week before Memorial Day weekend. It's a great time to remind boaters who are getting back on the water to be safe, and the Coast Guard and the Department of Natural Resources will be out there keeping us safe, and we're thrilled that Talbot County is joining us as well. Thank you.
That's great. Would you guys like to say anything?
I got nothing.
We're here to help.
Okay, well, I really appreciate it. Ms. Price?
Just thank you very much for your awareness of this, and in this county in particular, with either the most miles of shoreline or the second-most miles of shoreline, and the beauty that we have here, obviously, boating is a big thing here, and so it's very important that you've brought the awareness to being safe while you're out there having a good time. So thank you.
Thank you. DeVio?
So I grew up here water skiing and wakeboarding and playing in the different rivers around, and I certainly know the hazards and have seen some, plenty of dangerous activity out in the water, and so I appreciate the work that you guys do to keep us safe while we're out there. And I also know that the best way for people to cherish the Chesapeake Bay are to be in it, tasting it, playing it, and really enjoying it. So I want to see people out there. On the boater safety, I'm going to give Mr. Lesher here a little props, the Chesapeake Bay Maritime Museum started their boater safety class tonight, and they run that Tuesdays through Thursdays this week, July 19th through the 21st, and August 23rd through 25th. So anyone born after '72 has to have boater safety, which I think is extremely important for anyone to have. It's very easy to get lost out there, and the basic boater safety class teaches you how to be a lot safer. So appreciate all that you do, and the Maritime Museum as well, being a good partner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio, and of course, we know that even though it's not mandatory for those of us who are born before that date, it's still good practice. So thank you for all you do to promote boating safety. You know, I too, like Mr. DeVio, find myself out on the water with some frequency. I remember an incident some years ago where I was dressed out there with my kids, and a DNR marine officer came along and gave them each, I think it might have been ice cream coupons, because he observed them to be wearing life jackets aboard. Just that positive reinforcement. You know, I've also seen the tragic side of this. I've personally known a couple of people who have not just been injured, but lost their lives out on the water. And everything that we do to save a life, everything that you do to promote safety and save lives out there is so important to us, and especially in a county like this where we have so many opportunities to get out on the water. Thank you for the really important work that you do.
Like my colleague said, I'm born and raised here and on the water too, all the time, and not only during the day, but you guys are sort of emergency services too. You know, people are, you know, at night too, so at the strike of an emergency, you're there at night too. So, and people don't really under, you know, they think during the day, and then everybody goes to sleep at night, but you guys are still working. So, and I really appreciate that too, because it's very important, because there's a lot of boaters on the water at nights too, so. But anyway, appreciate everything, and thanks a lot for protecting Talbot County, okay? Thank you.
We got something for you. If you guys would come on up front, that'd be great.
Great, guys, just stand up.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks a lot. I appreciate your support. We appreciate you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you too. For your work.
Thank you. Okay, that was great. Really appreciate their help protecting us, that's for sure. Okay, the next up on the agenda is a presentation of a letter of interest for FY23, a community block grant that Mary Kay is going to tell us about.
Good evening, thank you very much. So the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program is a federally funded program designed to assist counties and municipality governments with activities directed toward neighborhood revitalization, housing opportunities, economic development, and improve public facilities and services. The Maryland Community Development Program is administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development. CDBG funds are provided primarily as gap funding and must meet a national and Maryland objectives. The CDBG applications are accepted on a competitive basis, both at the county and the state level. This year, we received four local nonprofit organizations' letters of interest seeking council consideration. Of those two projects were found to be a better fit and referred to other sources for potential funding. So we have forwarded to you a list for consideration of partnership for two organizations. The first is Habitat for Humanity. They are seeking $100,000 to rehabilitate a historic home located in the town of Easton at 122 South Locust Lane, and the funds will be used to support the demolition, stabilization, interior and exterior rehabilitation of an existing single-family home located in this historic area known as The Hill. The second application is for Building African American Minds, BAM. They are seeking $400,000 toward construction of an academic center located at 31 Joe White Street in Easton. The new three-story state-of-the-art facility will be located in the town of Easton in a low-to-moderate-income area, and the facility will continue to provide after-school and summer school programs, and will expand programming to offer workforce development program for youth and the community. So we're seeking council consideration for the project's support, and once the county selects a project or projects, a review and comment period will be conducted to include a public hearing, which is tentatively scheduled for May 24th, next Tuesday, at the council meeting, during which the council will hear the public as well as have a resolution presented authorizing submission of the application. Applications are due to DHCD by June 15th, and we are also noted that at the state level, this is a competitive basis. So DHCD will score the projects independently of the county and base those on factors to include the public purpose, the benefit to low-to-moderate-income persons, project impact, project management, and readiness to proceed, and local commitment and leveraging of funds. So these two applicants, it has been a pleasure working with these organizations. They've been very responsive to information that we've asked for, and it's a lot of work to get these CDBG applications together, and a lot of information, and either way, we wish them both the very best.
Okay. So, Madam Secretary, do we have to make any, do we have to do any actions to this?
Yeah.
So do we want to do these together or separate? Because I'll make a motion that we send the letters in support for the two CDBG applicants.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, second, to send both, oh, for approval.
To partnership with both.
Yep. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
That sounds good.
Thank you very much. I guess I'll see you next Tuesday.
Are you keeping track of how much grant dollars you help bring in to the county and facilitate?
We have an ongoing tab and a list of the projects. We have approximately 10 projects that are active right now. We're working on the two that were approved last year for the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center and Midshore Pro Bono, and we also have the two ERAP, ERAP 1 and 2, that are millions of dollars that are helping our local citizens.
I think the community would be shocked at how much you've done that's gone through your little office there, and I know I am, and I'm very impressed, and I'm appreciative of it, but I think that that might end up being an untold story, so I would make sure to keep track of that, and hopefully county staff, we can do something.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll see you next Tuesday.
Okay. I think you were right, Mr. DeVio, it's a good point.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, what's good to bring up. Okay, Madam Secretary, we got eligible for vote. We've got, would you please read Bill 1498 into the record?
Bill number 1498, An Act to Establish the 2022-2023 Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance.
Okay.
So there's an amendment that we discussed last week, so I guess ask Ken to give an update on that, and then we'll introduce the amendment.
Yep, that's exactly right. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Would you like me just to go straight to the amendment, or would you like a recap of the proposed budget, some of the bigger highlights?
I'd say let's do a recap, so everybody understands.
Okay, sure, sure.
Just short and sweet.
Short and sweet, I'll hit the major items. So the FY23 proposed general fund budget is approximately 112.6 million, which is essentially flat as compared to the FY22 budget. The FY23 budget for operating expenses is increasing by 7.7%, which is less than the 8.5% increase in the Consumer Price Index. Budget includes a 1 cent increase, the property tax rate to fund county operations, and a 1 cent educational supplement to support Talbot County public school initiatives. And public safety is a top priority, with budget increases for first responders like the Sheriff's Department, emergency medical services, and volunteer fire departments. It also includes funding for a property acquisition to house the Sheriff's Department and the Health Department. It fully funds the educational commitment and additional requests from Talbot County Public Schools, makes investments in roadways, covert replacements, and extension of sewer systems, investments in information technology for greater efficiency, transparency, and data security, and funding for increased retirement expenses with our paramedics joining the law enforcement officers' pension system to help fund their retirement. And it also includes, importantly, cost of living and step increases for all eligible employees to address inflationary recruitment and retention issues. It also includes rate increases for our enterprise fund sanitary district, help ensure that those costs are self-funded by revenue through customers served, and it uses approximately 114.3 million from our accumulated fund balance, with a projected ending balance of 31.6 million for FY23 and beyond, which is a very healthy fund balance to help manage the volatility in an uncertain economy. So on to the amendments compared to the budget that we proposed on May 3rd. We have made, we've received requests and have made adjustments, and I'll just go through the list. First, with the Sheriff's Department, we're increasing their salaries and benefits budget from $5,698,270 to $5,785,601, which is a net change of $87,331. And that's mostly related to pay scale adjustments to help then maintain market competitiveness in order to attract and retain their force. They have offset those increases partially by making concessions in their operating expense budget, reducing it from $1,124,942 to $1,112,942, a net decrease of $12,000. So for net, for the Sheriff's Department, it's an increase of $75,331 to help fund mostly their personnel costs, salary adjustments to help retain their personnel. For county roads, they adjusted their capital outlay budget from $525,000 to $475,000, a net decrease of $50,000, and that's mostly related to them doing some effective shopping, finding lower-cost options to purchase the big item, bulldozer, that wasn't quite as expensive when they started getting quotes relative to what they originally budgeted. For senior services, their operating appropriation increased from $562,284 to $587,284, a net increase of $25,000, and that's helped, that's related to their increase, more than expected increase in personnel costs. For the Health Department, we made adjustments to their budget, which is really just a clerical adjustment. The original budget was $12,000 for school health and $885,308 for the addictions program. That, those two line items were transposed in the original budget. Fortunately, we don't need quite that much money for the addictions program. That money is going to school health, so those two line items were adjusted, where the school health program is increased by $873,308, and a similar reduction to the addictions program, so, but no net change in the Health Department, it was just a clerical transposition error. And then the employee benefits line item was decreased by, well, from $855,102 to $802,771. That decrease, as intended, mostly is absorbing the market adjustment for the Sheriff's Department and their increase in personnel costs. So that was an amount that was reserved principally for that and other employee benefit-related items. So net, all of these adjustments, there is no net change to the budget as originally presented on May 3rd. Working down to, I'm sorry, one more item. For the capital budget, that is increasing for county facilities, for the new facility, for the Health Department, from $12 million to $13 million, just for the actual estimated value of that acquisition is more than $12 million. So we added a million for that, just to cover the possible increased cost.
Got you.
And that concludes the amendments.
Yeah.
A point of clarification, and this was just, you mentioned that the FY23 budget, the use of fund balance, you mentioned it was 114.3 million, but it's actually 14.3 million.
I'm sorry, 14.3 million. There you go. I misstated that, thank you.
I thought I heard that too, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, 14.3.
Okay, that sounds very, good job, Ken.
So would you like a motion to introduce the Amendment 1?
Yes.
I will do that.
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion, second, to do Amendment 1. Call to vote, please.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Okay. So do we have a motion to do Amendment? Did you want to do each one individual, is that what you were?
There's only the one amendment.
The one amendment's got all of them on here.
It has the operating and it has the capital, so we've done that. And I just want, on that, I just want to thank everybody for getting together so that we didn't have to turn the whole thing upside down, finding some savings to make up for the increases and having a zero net change on that. I do appreciate the work on that. Probably a lot easier on the Finance Department, too. So I guess with that, I'll make a motion to approve the entire budget.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a.
Go ahead, Mr. Lesher.
Just, you know, budgets are policy documents, they're a reflection of our priorities, and in this case, this reflects our commitment to the voters, to fund public safety, adding those sheriff's deputies, raising the deputies' pay, funding the new retirement system for them that will help us to recruit and retain sworn officers. This is really important work, it's a commitment that we made, and we're following through on that commitment with this budget. Likewise, with EMT services, making that surge unit in the North County full-time and adding, allowing our EMTs to buy into that same retirement system that's accessible. This is important work and part of the commitment that we made when we asked the voters to allow an extra penny on the property tax. This is, this is what we promised to do, and this is what we're following through to do this. And I think we're managing to do this all in a fiscally responsible way, spending within our means, as it was pointed out, the, this is essentially a flat budget year-over-year. And so I want to thank all the staff who have supported us through this process and getting us to this point, and my fellow council members for working through all these issues so smoothly this year. This is an important, an important step forward for Talbot County.
So I'd like to follow up on that. There's, being my last budget cycle here, I've really enjoyed the budget because it's collectively working together to solve the problems of the community. And we're challenged financially because we don't have infinite dollars to spend, and there's a lot of times when we're looking at how to work groups together, and things in the past that have been done where, a perfect example is the senior center in St. Michael's in the library, putting those two facilities together. We've known that storage has long been an issue for Talbot County, for the government, every department needs more storage. I say it every time, I'll say it again, the ice rink even needs more storage out there as big as that building appears. So it's been a real pleasure to sit down with a unique council from different backgrounds, different ages, and try to come up with the best solution for the community. Our current, my current concerns are the mental health and the financial stability of this community. That has been foremost in the front of my mind, is every day when I wake up, I'm reading The Star Democrat, and I'm seeing somebody that's had some kind of mental episode which has caused harm or challenges to the community. And I'm glad that we're addressing those. Moving the Health Department from the current location out to the new health corridor of Talbot County, Ottawa Avenue, is going to be excellent for this community, for individuals to be able to get the immediate resources that they need while having the walking trail and being able to walk. and being able to walk to those places easily. When the other option, other things that we're doing, the Sheriff's Department, the amount of work that we've done with the Sheriff's Department, I, I always like to be somewhat fit in, but unique. And we did that when we gave LEOPS first and foremost on the Eastern Shore, showing them the respect that they deserve, getting those long-term officers off the streets and giving them a nice, comfortable retirement so that we can then front-load the salaries and have the additional money upfront to pay them a higher wage without having injury-prone deputies or ones out on the road longer than they need to be. Everybody followed suit. So you know you did the right thing when everybody around you is following along, but then they start stealing your staff. And so that's why we've had to do some income changes to retain the good deputies that we have here and show them the rewards for the work that they've done keeping us safe. Then another perfect example is the Elections Board Office. There's not a lot of revenue coming in out of that, but we have to have it, obviously, if we want to get elected back in again. But we need to figure out what's the safest way to keep those ballots and boxes secure when they're not being used, as well as giving them space, and looking for ways to, to fit pieces together, save money, be financially responsible, but not cut our nose off to spite our face is what this budget's done. There have been times when we came up short, and I'm very proud of Ken and his staff to work hard and find ways to fill those shortfalls within this budget. And the biggest challenge for myself, and I assume some others, with this is the, the money that we moved over. We, we certainly could have added it to the taxes and increased property taxes and not dipped into savings. That's what we've done historically. And that's what I would have wanted to do, and pay your own way. If, if the Board of Ed's increasing this budget, then it should be an educational supplement, you know, and we should be doing that. But this is at a time that's unique. You heard us say that we're going to increase the cost for the sewer fees. That's going to be a big fee to individuals in this community. That alone was reason enough for me to want to stick, to dip into our savings this year instead of increasing taxes, because there is going to be an increase in fees to the community. So that was a challenge for me, and certainly a different mindset dipping into savings when you're going into putting out bond issues, you want to make sure that you're financially stable before you go to the bank and ask to borrow money. And we are, and that is a huge credit to Angela Lane in the back of this room here for getting us to that point. She has done an excellent job and even stepped up when we needed her this time desperately. So I, I really thank her for, for being there, helping us through. And Ken, you have done a fantastic job, this is way above what you had signed up for, I appreciate you stepping up. And that's, that's what we do here in Talbot County, and then I, I have no, no concerns with this. After working with you, I'm very comfortable and confident, so thank you for helping me get there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio.
Yep.
So it's really hard to believe that this is my twelfth, twelfth and final budget, and it has really changed dramatically, and I'm going to give a thank you off to Angela as well for working together on all of those, on all of those budgets, who have taught me so very much. And I remember the first budget, and we were making cuts like crazy, and, you know, I thought, gosh, this is really hard making, making those decisions. And someone once told me that first year, it's actually a lot harder to do a budget when you have money, because, you know, when you don't, you know, you, you have to say no, and you're going to get a little bit of heat for that. But to put this into perspective of where the budget has gone, that was in the, I want to say sixty-five to sixty-eight million dollar range twelve years ago, and we're looking at almost double that. We talk about this being a flat budget and all of that, but what has gone on in just over a decade with the, with the increase in the budget? People might think, why are you spending, you know, so much more money? And it's not that we've added a lot of positions, like my colleagues, I agree with what, what Mr. Lesher and Mr. DeVio have said about where our priorities have been. It has just gotten a lot more expensive to do business and retain employees where we, you know, twelve years ago, we were having to make decisions of, of, of cutting employees, which was an incredibly painful process. We've gone through tax rates, I think once in twelve years, we went from the income tax from two point two five to two point four percent on the income tax, but we've, we've maintained that as, I think it's the second lowest income tax rate in the state. State doesn't like us very much for that, and it messes up our funding formulas primarily in education because we have maintained those low tax rates. If we didn't, as we know, prior, and I know Ms. Lane will remember this, just prior to me getting into office for those, those two years, we lost, we went from thirty-one million dollars in income tax revenue, I believe it was down to nineteen million on the year before I took office. And that was due in large part to just a handful of people leaving Talbot County. And I think that we've kept that in mind, that if you were to raise the income tax, that when just a handful of people leave, you can lose millions and millions of dollars. So we have worked really hard to live within those means. Fortunately, those have come back, you know, you know, from nineteen million up to twenty-eight, we're not back up to thirty-one. Our, you know, property taxes, we have had to raise those. And again, due to education, in two thousand and twelve, they passed a couple of things, and I know, I'm going to give you a little, this is my last one, so you'll indulge me. Two thousand and twelve, you know, the state passed a couple of things having to do with education, and one was, they passed teacher pensions off to us, we had to pay a much larger portion of that. We thought, oh, well, they won't do that, and put a maintenance-of-effort law in, and maintenance-of-effort means you can never, ever give less than what you gave the year before per pupil. And they did them both. And so we're in this, as you all know now, in a revenue-capped county that is imposed by the voters, and we went to the voters twice to, to change that, but the state said on education, you, you can break your tax cap in order to fund education. And so we did that, and the property taxes are significantly more due to education, and we've had to figure out how do we pay for, you know, the other half of county government, which has really, it has gotten more expensive, especially in the last few years. You know, we, we have made that commitment to public safety, as my colleague said. And there's just a lot of other things, a lot of other capital projects that we, that we have to do. From the first day I was on the council, we talked about the Health Department, which has taken twelve years, but we're going to, you know, probably put the final touches on what, what exactly we're going to do and where that's going to go. And, you know, the airport's gone through changes, and now we have that building out there that's going to have to come down, so we have to find a place to house our sheriff and public safety and continuing to add to all of that. And all of that does add up to almost twice the budget. And we've done, I think every council, the three councils I've been on, have, have done everything we possibly can to keep the tax rates as, as low as possible. And Mr. DeVio is absolutely right, you know, when, when you see a fourteen million dollar transfer from fund balance to, to help with operating, there's a couple of ways to think about that. One, I look at that as returning an overpayment of taxes back to the public, and that's what should be done. You know, we obviously need to keep a very healthy fund balance, and that doesn't even include, you know, the rainy day fund when, when we have hard times. I remember looking back at the two years prior to me getting on the council and transferring seventeen million dollars, I think it was eight million one year, and I keep looking out there to Ms. Lane and seeing if she's nodding, eight million one year and nine million the next year. And I was like, wow, they had, you know, what else could, could they do? And here we are, transferring nearly that much in, in one year. And I know it's scary. So one penny on the property tax, so people know, is about seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars. And obviously, our budget is, you know, education budget is going up more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're funding the maintenance-of-effort plus at least about a million dollars, plus whatever is in their capital. And I know that we're going to have to absorb that, that when you put it on the education supplement, then you've, you've built that into the base. And I know that our Finance Office has a lot of concerns about that, but like my colleagues, we're like, we just can't do that, we just can't do that to the people this year. And as far as the public safety goes, again, a penny on that, we're spending a lot more than another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on public safety because we made that commitment to, to the voters who allowed us to have some extra revenue stream. And we'll tell you that education with Kerwin is going to go up millions and millions of dollars every year. From a budget of, I want to say my first year, we were in the thirty to thirty-five million dollar range, it's fifty million this year, and in ten years, it's going to be eighty million dollars, education alone, at a minimum. And that doesn't include, like this year, we're doing Kerwin plus a million. And I expect that future councils are going to, you know, Kerwin unfortunately, as much as that's going up. So, yeah, the property taxes in Talbot County will definitely go up over the next ten years and, and beyond, but it's a hard process, it's a long process to go through it. One more little story, first year on the budget, we went through this alphabetically. I mean, we still get the big budget book that's this thick, and everything was arranged alphabetically, and that's how we went through it. So we might go from something we fund twenty-five thousand dollars to two, two categories later, you know, Board of Education of, you know, thirty-five or forty million dollars, and it didn't really make sense. And Ms. Lane had a, had a nice three-page summary, that's now a four or a five-page summary, but it was listed alphabetically, and I'm like, that's the first thing, I'm like, that doesn't make sense. We really, well, every department is equally important. You've got to know what you have left to work with, so we rearranged that. I asked you to rearrange that and do biggest to smallest, so that after you made those first, you know, five or eight, we really knew what was left for all the other, you know, thirty other things that we fund in, in county government. So it's been fun, I, budget is my favorite thing, and I know I always have a lot, lot to say about it, but it's, it's hard to believe that this is the last one. It's like everything we do now, you know, for a few of us up here, and I know Mr. Pack's not here to talk about it because he probably has something to say about, you know, the fourteen or fifteen budgets he's done. But I certainly thank the people in the Finance Department and, and all the department heads for really doing everything you can to get the most bang out of your buck when we've asked you to not, to stay flat and present those budgets to us. You all have done that, and that enables the council to keep the taxes as low as possible. And I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate working with my colleagues from the last, you know, the last three councils. This is a one area that, you know, we have a couple of little differences, but for the most part, we've been very, very together on, on the budget, and it doesn't seem to matter, even on the budget, whether you're a D or an R, you know, we know what our citizens need here, and I think all the councils have always been quite conservative with that, and, and our staff gets the services out there to the people where they need to be. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Price, well said. And like Ms. Price and my colleagues said, I won't be this long, okay? I won't be this long. But good job. Mr. Pack, Ms. Price, and Mr. DeVio, it is going to be your last one. Hopefully, then Mr. Lesher will kind of move on and, and help the county. But you were a big part of the last, you know, ten, fifteen years, that's for sure. And the county owes you a lot because it was well thought, and there was a lot to budgets, budgets. So what is, is special about this budget here, other than staff putting it together and doing such great, great work, it, it's, it's really, to me, very honored to be where we're providing the citizens a new Health Department and a new Sheriff's Department in upgrading all the emergency services, you know, we've got new ambulances coming. So it's, it's really special to be part of really what the citizens really, at the end of the day, the safety, the health, and lower taxes. That's what it's about. And I think, I think we've provided that the best we can with the services that we have. So I'm proud of everybody, and, and it's, like my colleague said, you guys, meaning our employees out there that work day and night, make us look good, you know, you really, really do. And you're the unsung heroes sometimes. I know we all stress out at these meetings sometimes and really go through a lot and, and spend some time from three o'clock to ten o'clock at night, and we have six and seven-hour meetings. So, but it's worth it, you know, that's what we're elected to do, and that's what we love to do, and we really work hard to provide, I think, a phenomenal service for Talbot County. So.
Well, it's, it's hard to follow up on all that, but as your county manager, I'd be remiss not to say a couple of things. And I don't want to be repetitive, but certainly, I thank the staff, that, you know, our department heads and everybody that's worked hard to come up with a budget that's modest, that recognizes the uncertainties that we're in right now, and that addresses the priorities that you've given us and that voters have given you. And so I'm proud of that work, and I want to thank council for your support in helping put together this budget as well. It supports our operational strategy of investing, you know, in our workforce. Workforce stability is very important right now. You see the great resignation happening all over, you see all kinds of dynamic shifts, and it's important that we keep the good people that we have, and we do have good people. So, you know, we, we can continue to support our personnel, our processes, you've invested in technology to help us streamline some of our processes, to help hopefully reduce the number of complaints in, in some of our departments and enhance operations and other ones. And then you've, you've helped fund certain projects that are very important, some major road projects that we hope to move forward to completion on, extending sewer to rescue failing septic systems, which frankly is environmental, they're environmental mitigation projects. And then building a, a north-end EMS station to make sure we can deliver that eight-minute response time for our paramedics to people in trouble. And then finally, a public safety building and a Health Department, so it's, it's ambitious. But in that third prong of our, of our strategy, you know, we are challenged right now with projects with the supply chain, but you've given us the resources to push it. And, and the staff, we will push forward. So again, it's, it's my honor to serve as your county manager, and I certainly appreciate our staff. You, you have a lot of support behind you, council, and thank you for your direction.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Stamp, I appreciate it. So I guess at this time, I think we started with, is there, is there a motion to?
We did that.
A motion in a second, so you just need to ask for the.
Okay, okay, I have a motion in second to approve the bill fourteen ninety-eight. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Okay, so pass. Good job, everybody.
See you when you get back from vacation, Ken.
Well deserved.
He deserves it, he deserves it, yep. Thank you, Angela, I appreciate it. Okay, so let's, let's move on. Mr. Stamp, you want to move us ahead, please?
I'd be glad to. So thank you, Mr. Council President and members of the council, and the county manager reports this evening. We have one board and committee appointment, this is for the Airport Board, we're requesting the reappointment of Hugh Grundon to serve on the airports, Airport Board.
We got a motion in a second to approve Mr. Grundon back on the board. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
And next I ask Dana Newman and whoever she'd like to bring up to come forward. Council, we have a request from the Talbot County Free Library for a letter of support to provide matching funds for the design and architectural engineering services for the St. Michael's Library Expansion Project. As you read in your agenda packet, the Talbot County Free Library is seeking council approval for a letter to support to the Maryland State Library Agency to provide forty-five thousand dollars in matching funds for the design and architectural engineering services for the St. Michael's Library Expansion Project. Dana Newman is here to answer any questions. Additionally, before I, I turn it over to her, there's a second request that she'll address with you, and that's a second letter of support for the library's application to the FY twenty-four Maryland Library Capital Grant Program. And again, as you read in your agenda packet, the Talbot County Free Library is seeking council approval for a letter to support the Maryland State, to, to the Maryland State Library Agency for the FY twenty-four Library Capital Grant Program, funding the St. Michael's Library Expansion Project. Dana, again, is here to answer any questions. So I know that was a mouthful, but I'll turn it over to you for counsel.
Sure. First, I would like to thank you for your support of the library and the operating and capital budget, I appreciate that. And I'd like to introduce Shawna Buella, who is our branch manager for the St. Michael's Library, and may be able to answer questions as well. And then we have board members as well as staff behind us, so what we're looking for is support for our letter of certification first. The letter of certification basically, well, let me say a little bit about the St. Michael's Library. The St. Michael's Library is a wonderful library with Sean- The St. Michael's Library is a wonderful library with Shawna leading the efforts to really give, they bend over backwards to give wonderful customer service to not only the St. Michael's community, but the Bay Hundred and the hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of people who visit the St. Michael's community. It really acts as a default visitor center. They get many, many questions, actually more questions that are tourist and visitor-related than reference questions. So they do a great job with that. This expansion would really give the community an additional space in the meeting room. It would be a 40% expansion. It gives better ADA accessibility. It also adds more children's and teen space. And then I would say that we're in the design of this library. We're looking to add a small business center. We know that small businesses in the county need as much support as they can get. So we really do want to make sure that we're supporting the business community. And then we're also looking, again, at this library being what it is, which is a default visitor center. And so making sure that it incorporates very comfortable elements in the library. So I'm not going to go into great detail there, but the first letter that we need is a letter of certification that's required by the Library Capital Grant Program. The Library Capital Grant Program is a $7 million state program, and we are looking for matching funds for fiscal year '23. And our grant application was approved. And so the state is looking to provide $45,000, and we need a matching amount for that for fiscal year '23. In addition, the committee who looks at these thought that this project was so important that they went ahead and funded for fiscal year '24. They approved funding of $75,000 at the time that they thought to complete, and that's the matching funding, to complete the design of this building. But as we all know, costs go up, and we had a recent estimate done, and there is additional monies needed for the completion of design. So what we're looking for in the certification letter is a certification that the county will match the $45,000 as well as the $75,000 in fiscal year '24. So that's the first letter. I didn't know if you wanted to...
So council, those funds are budgeted for the current year ask in FY23, and they are in the CIP budgeted for FY24.
So I'll make a motion that we send the letter in support certifying that the county has budgeted the funds as required, as needed for this project.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Did you want to, did you need to...
I kind of read them both.
Okay. So the second letter is our intent to commit funding that is actually required by the Library Capital Grant Program in order to apply. And what we're looking for is a match of $175,300. And that is in combination for fiscal year '24 with the $75,000. So a total request really of $250,300. And again, that goes to the remainder of design and then starts our construction. You will see that in this letter, it also requires that we put that there's an intent to match funding for the entire project. And that's, this amount that's in here is only covering the eligible funding that's needed for this project. There are some costs that are not eligible to be covered by the grant. So that amount is 2,007, sorry, 2,000, $2,070,329. Because right now, the total for the project is 4.1 million. So we're looking for support for this letter as well.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the letter thanking the Maryland Library Capital Grant Program for the $120,000 and certifying that we will fund the $175,300 along with the capital grant, the capital funds needed for the matching project.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Secretary.
So I have to say, there's adequate budget, there's adequate funds in the capital improvement program budget to fund the request for the letter.
Thank you, Ms. Stamp. Thank you. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your support, and all the residents do as well, and visitors.
And I want to thank you guys and the committee and everything that you do for the county too, because it's very important. So thanks a lot for coming, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item I have, council, is an announcement that the week of May 15 through 21st, which we're presently in, is recognized as National EMS Emergency Medical Services Provider Week. And this week honors not only our EMS personnel, but our 911 dispatchers, emergency and critical care nurses, doctors, and technicians, MSP aviation medics and pilots and commercial aircraft that support the EMS mission around the nation. And so I just wanted to share that with everybody. We benefit, it's near and dear to my heart. We have an excellent system here, and we have, you know, we make a difference every day with our team. So with that, that's all I have for you this evening from the county manager report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stamp. That's for sure. We appreciate all you do and all the hard work you do too, that's for sure. Okay. Just, does anybody sign up for public comments?
No public comments tonight.
Okay, none. Okay. All right, let's, we're getting close here, well, I mean, real close. Council comments. I'll start off with Mr. DiVillio.
I've got one here that was given to me.
I see you pulling stuff out here.
Frank, can you please announce this tonight?
Okay, please.
So the Bill Person Fishing Pier State Park Community Discussion will be, and this is on the state park, because as we know, they have announced that the bridge will be closed. But for the state park discussion will be May 23rd from 6 until 8, and that will be at 29761 Bowling Brook Point Drive in Trapp, Maryland. More information is available at the Talbot County Parks and Rec Department website for that hearing and community discussion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Price?
I have no comments this evening.
Okay, okay. Mr. Lesher?
I have nothing further.
I think the only thing I have to say is, once again, our hearts go out to Mr. Pack and his family, and we hope, we hope everybody heals and has a little prayer. And we miss Cory tonight and wish he was here, so... But other than that, Mr. Lesher, could you go ahead?
Can I say one more thing real quick?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Just because of the week that we're in, I saw this on Facebook, and we all know the individual, so I assume you've made it pretty public. It's freely shared. There's an individual in Talbot County who's been a state police officer for his whole career. When he was much younger, he was involved in a bad car accident with an old Bronco II, which is coming back. And he was flown out, and he always wanted to do that. And he had been in EMS over in Dorchester County while still being a police officer. And he said in the Post, every time he saw the helicopter land, he knew he should be on there. Well, he just got into the training program for that. And it gave me goosebumps seeing it. But that is the epitome of Talbot County residents there, that it's an individual from here, his family's here, he's made a contribution his entire life to public safety, and continues to step up and do the right thing to be there for us. And it was so exciting to see him go through that and be able to return the favor to other citizens who were in need as what was given to him. I was just excited, and I felt that that just led perfectly into this week.
I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you. Mr. Vice President?
All right. The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 24th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.